Hi.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Oh, great. We just made these logs.
Figure out what it was.
I got it. Which one? Our door. And one of those things where it happened two years ago, I thought. See, it hurts so much when I come off. And then it goes. Then fingers on the cardboard.
Hello.
Fingers on the cardboard. I think that was a first time.
Seven months will call me for order. First item of business, who fills up officer annual meeting.
So first I'll say that action is local board of health officials. So it's not my.
Right.
I, you know, like things, say to me all day at work. But this is one of the two regulations to take. Hopefully, I can help you. Um, the last one we did was last fall. So I heard it was not up. In June 2021, there was an update to the RSA coming in, which basically all the help officer information. And it was good. There was some, I started doing help officer since 2019, where at that time it was like very minimal oversight. There was no real specific things out. It was a handbook, but it was very, it was very easy to do. Monitor, so to speak. Uh, you both, we had obviously a lot of additional responsibilities and it was identified different challenges that existed sometimes that were strong programs. Honestly, I was new, so I didn't have much to go on. A small town, I don't have that much, really. But one of the things was that we have to do a consistent requirements training for help officers in each county. I just put the online training. Um, so thank you for, I think there was a fee, I don't know if I missed, let's do that a little bit. But it was very good. It goes in depth into all the different RSA details. So like when we ever had a particular concern about complaints or whatnot that comes to you guys, you can look to me and I can help you with that. But I have even more of a formal training on how to do it along that way. You have to be ready to give a local readiness report if they say there were asks. You know, I would ask, you know, at the individual level of a county unless something, you know, came up with our annual register or something. But I don't think that you'll come. But at the very least, we have to do it once a year locally with help. Where I can just introduce myself to the folks in town in Manitoba, also have the opportunity to bring any questions to this forum, at least once a year, maybe if it comes up, report back to us, like, oh, we got issues on this thing account and the work today, updates every day. I just, the best of the fun of this is, I'm going to keep you on here. Uh, but I'm on the next two weeks, so if you might. And my goal, which really is the emergency risk education motto is, be first, be right and credible, so have the message come out before it's handled. Maybe it's a very good point. Um, that's, I'm going to use the four roles of help officer as an instrument in the RSA. Um, so messaging before it sends off, public health issues that can be modeled, particularly for our parents. I've had, we've had a few of those things that are, I gotta be honest, from the first TQ before all the circulation, I didn't really know that I had much, hey, knowledge of the authority to do anything. But it was just nice to have a voice, to lend another voice to the conversation. But there are some specific laws in place potentially exposed as far as medical care. Bed balance and testations, accidents come up, people kind of assume someone's expression is used for the president's name. Please look into that, the email over the phone. Um, you know, the state law, which I talked to about the model, educate people on public health issues. And that could be, um, whether it's, you know, the speed of season and all that, questions that come up about spraying, maybe just, um, not related to spraying, they're just, there have been triple D, different things that have found in the area that they do, I gotta learn that and share it with you guys. Um, in terms of vaccines that are coming out, there was a flu vaccine just got ordered today that our practice has been kind of extreme with the flu vaccine, so I was very fortunate to know that, that's a near thing. And then in the next few weeks, it probably will be a very specific COVID booster that will be available to folks. And do you believe this is the last vaccine that will be available using public money from the ACT fund? So for folks to go down the terms that is, um, for the qualification training. Uh, there was an annual help officer meeting. Haven't been able to tune them. There are a lot of online things.
They know more than you, Tom.
Yeah, they're, and they actually, I'm sure they're very good. I just kind of didn't get my.
Kind of image.
But if there's ever anything that comes up, uh, as, as far as things that come to your end, or we've been like, building, I know sometimes it's something we can guys talk about. You know, I had with Larry, John, Billy, Inspector, and the other folks in town that have more of like normal role, like, remember when the gas station, I forgot. There was a thought on, I had some present, both help officer sign off on the recovery piece, but that's actually just safe. There's different pieces that, but I think I may know one. I don't know if it's right or not, but, uh, for folks, there is a great disservice of all help officers throughout the state. Email log is that if anybody, I have an act of office and things out, and it's great to sort of share that effect. There are some little resources there, um, that's obviously we, they just updated their website, probably has six hundred photos, it's like, it's COVID nineteen website for the state. I made a short, bitty link for Pantry Monkey House information and the different help officers communications for the URL, it's like a hundred pages long, but it posts, this should be, I think, on the website. If you could ask too much of folks if the actual PDF and not scanned, where you study different elements of the law. If not, I can maybe walk through it. But I don't know if you guys had any questions. I have the, I'm in the corner, I want to present to sort of let you know, yeah, my role, the fact that there is pretty good oversight, these days now, I think, of officers in the county. And this is the, you got the local board of health active in our town, hopeful. So it's not, this is the meeting of the local board of health as far as the RSA. So if anything, I also, I put it in the library, it's on the plan, I have anything, like this last few walls, like, first person, kind of just to gather what it is, so if you want preparation wise, oh, we'll just assess that in the next quarter.
Is there, um, has there been any talk about vaccine bans with the COVID booster coming out?
I have not heard that. I don't know if, um, I don't know, so there's not many talk about it, particularly because right now the pharmacies really haven't really given that work of delivering vaccines to folks. But if there is, I'll always say something that you guys will see. But the thing is that it shouldn't be coming out probably in the next month. And then the only thing I would just say is that depending on when, like, the last district, if it's in very, if it comes out, it might be eligible, if there is sort of, if it's going to be available, that you want to, you don't know. Um, for that to be, like, I actually waited myself, whereas to get the, whatever, some of my other colleagues have heard, to get a super case, I mean, your, you know, other condition of.
Sure. Other questions? Any other? Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate you serving the town the way you do. It's been great. You know, we're always open, so if you have questions for us, let us know. But appreciate you taking the time, Doug. Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, next up, Dottie, Magic Park. So what do you have for us?
I'm here receiving advice and, anyway, um, receiving to introduce a petition to town folks to remain in Magic Park to get this part.
Okay.
I think the kind of difference between the petition or the effort to do that, I'm sure you all have seen it happening.
So you guys, you guys have a copy, correct, of the deed transfer and the?
I did not proceed it until I was able to get the news and advice to proceed.
So are there any, um, remaining descendants of Mary Spalding Badger Pike or Ellen Gregory Badger Serston in the area or that we know of?
Not in the area of Illinois. However, the disciple of the legal history facility, on the legal, there's one, um, that I know.
Okay.
And having read, um, a monument at Magic Park, there is one that I think on the legal disciple, or who was a veteran, or just, or not just a member of the form, yeah, that the deed of the park.
Okay. Okay. That's the, I think the one question I have is, is obviously because the descendants of the ones who deeded it. Now, they deeded to the town, and it looks to me, at least a brief reading I made of the deed, the town, uh, there's no requirement in terms of the naming of the park. It says, or otherwise said, oh, I'm sorry. So it's excessive signs of park being known as Badger Memorial Park, otherwise said practically, or averting grant holders to airs between the signs. So have you, you have raised this with any legal counsel, have you?
I didn't, I, I, I brought my ass to town.
Yeah, no, we certainly need to.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that line in there is probably the most concerning.
Probably.
And it may require us to reach out to the descendants and see if they approve of us making a name change or not. We'll have to, we'll have to get legal advice. I, personally, I don't have a problem with it. Um, and, but I don't know if, you know, legally, what, we're gonna end up doing, we, we.
Exactly. That's a common, my other problem is that I could not go forward with this, as this says, the deed of Magic Park.
I, I think, I would assume that that would, if it's known as Badger Memorial Park and we refer to that as Magic Memorial at Magic Park, I would assume that that would.
I have all these all the ways, only that's why I'm calling you in the park.
Sure. Sure. And that's what it serves, in terms of time itself.
Exactly.
Which is, which is not. Well, we'll definitely have to have legal counsel leave it. The good news is, I think, if you're bringing this to us now, we have a lot of time to try to address it before time immediately, which is where we'll have to pay it for, on your left. Uh, other things that you guys know?
I just read, it seems the simple solution is that is to keep it as Magic Park, Badger Memorial Park, or some version of the reference, and that should be a threat to deal with, I guess.
Is there a sign? I don't know there's one. There's no, there's no sign indicating the name of, of the park itself. But I'll give this to, to Director of our Legal Counsel. And then I'll, I'll do some follow up with you, Dottie. I have your email, so, um, and then we'll, um, see where we are with it based on the day of that time. Great. Thank you so much for coming, Dottie. Okay. And thank you very much for tracking down the deed. That's obviously the art part, right?
That's the, is the, uh.
Oh, they, they tracked it out? Oh, great. So you, they know where, they know where the bodies are buried, right? So, okay, great. Well, thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah. You're welcome to stay. Um, the next item we have is our MS 535. This is for 2021. There's our 2022 MS 535, but this represents the voted appropriations and then our actual expenditures for our prior fiscal year. If you want to take a look at that. So this letter is from the town to our auditors, basically stating with respect to our audit that we did our responsibilities, we provided them the financial information as they requested, that there aren't any conflicts, there's no fraud that we're aware of, there's no issues pending that we haven't informed them about, we disclosed everything about our obligations, our debts. We don't think that there's any, um, you know, violations about any ordinances, et cetera, et cetera. So if you want to take a moment, I know there's a lot of items, there's forty five items on the, on the list, so if you want to just take a moment to go through, let me know if you think that there's any issues that we are stipulating to, that we completely, completely stipulated to. Especially note, item number twenty seven, which you may be in. Any questions or concerns about the representation one? I'll make a motion that we sign your presentation to Plazek in Sanderson for our, for our 2021 audit. About two seconds? All in favor? Aye. So you'll just put that on the letter and I'll get it to tomorrow. Um, you should have in your packets, information, the insurance paperwork for the local hack marathon. They provided a certificate of liability insurance. I don't know if there's anything that we need to do, but it's just informing you that they're obtaining insurance for running the hack marathon through the courts. Any questions, concerns, or issues with the local hack in Fort Mariposa?
One question, Chief, your good voters?
Yes, there was one, we previously, that eighty seven rail trail in Martin County, spell the black issue, to the other grounds, not so, to the, to the insurance.
So no, no outstanding issues on your side?
No, it's really, it's a different question, I think, this year, of previous experiences with, with, um, with, or, or.
Uh, all right. Uh, we'll do the logo. Um, collection of plastic bags, it should be a little flyer, it looks like NextTrek is requesting recycling of storage bags, ziplock bags, cereal box liner, bread bags, meat curries, public rattle. Uh, and they turned them into forty eight extensions. So what exactly are they looking for here?
They basically want to come up with a collection of plastic bags, bread bags, grocery store bags, and they need about five hundred pounds, that they would normally have a trash and wait, and then they will maybe eventually save some.
Um, are they looking for us to start something specific, like in here in town or at school?
Yeah, so Sue and I went to school with the class, because she really liked him, and it's a meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know where to put the collection of plastic bags, so, um, he says, we're in school, ready to, to help him second.
Did you guys forward this to the?
We did not, just by the, yeah. Can be honest last week.
Okay.
So, and just to land it to us, just, yeah, they were the major group, because they might have called it a flat, and I'd say that was, don't need any problem, I would buy it.
I would think that the school would love to get a mention, that, Director, do I have a digital mention? I, I don't know what you guys, but I would, I would suggest we forward this to the school board and certainly support their efforts and make note of this around the town, if they, we can, you know, if they set something up there, then everybody can drop off there, so. Uh, are we talking to the school board about that?
Yeah.
Yep? I'll do that.
I think the next meeting is on Thursday.
Oh, I'll, I'll email it tomorrow. This, you mean tomorrow, I said?
No, next.
Oh, a week, okay, great. Um, oh, along those lines, just before I forget, October fifth is, um, the school is supposed to have a discussion about the security, if you want to attend, um, there will be a non-public before the regular session, but if you want to walk off that date for their meeting, with, that would be our protocol. Uh, school board, all right. Uh, election, school board attendance. Select board, oh, okay. So, uh, election on September thirteenth, correct?
Yes.
Um, under the RSA's, uh, select board members are requested to attend, and if you can't attend, appointed designate, if you're unable to appoint a designate, the court and moderator are believed to appoint a designate in your, in your position. Um, I don't know if you, you guys are planning on attending. I will be here all day, um, but if, if you can't, um, we'll let, either, if you guys can identify somebody to be your representative, that'd be great, but if you can't, then we'll, we'll find somebody. Okay, great. Oh, okay, wonderful, perfect. All right. Um, tabletted voice for Harper Funds. So, um, we had approved what was supposed to be two hundred dollars for the tablet for the stormwater management program, software and, and the tablet itself, which will allow them to input as they go around, additional data for stormwater management. Apparently, it, the pricing is actually five sixty nine ninety nine. So we had approved two hundred out of the Harper Fund. I'll make a recommendation that we allow the full five sixty nine ninety nine out of the Harper Funds as a move.
Sure.
Oh, be second, all in fit? Aye? Great. Thank you very much for that. Uh, veterans tax credit. So, um, we received the veteran's tax credit, there was a request not to discuss the individual percent by name, uh, but they qualify for both veteran's tax credits. Can you take a look at that? And if there's any questions to raise? Um, and if there's any questions, please raise them. No? You good? Uh, all right, I'll make a motion to accept the Badger's Tax Credit application before us.
Second.
Second by committee, all in favor? Aye? Thank you. Uh, right. Another boring part. Um, minutes, revenue expenses, and September meeting dates. So, um, if you want to look at the calendar, go up there for the September meeting dates. And, um, note that at one of the September meetings, we will try to do the poll tax public hearing. Are we expecting anything busy? Uh, I think we, I think we were looking at the 13th, the 13th is election day, so we weren't doing that. Did we schedule September meetings last time? Okay, great, okay. So, um, the 13th is election day, uh, so let's avoid that. Um, we could always do something on, uh, the 12th to the 14th if we feel the need to. That's not a problem. Um, are there dates that you guys have preferences for traveling or working?
20th because you want to be in the works.
20th, you're right, okay. So, um, if you want to shoot for the 27th, and if you guys want to do something on the 12th to the 14th, I don't expect, you know, outside of the public hearing for the poll tax, which, you're perfectly right, I don't expect to take very long. Um, I don't think there's a lot of business at the next meeting. So, do you guys want to shoot to like, do something on the 12th? Get that one out of the way? Or, um, you want to just do the 28th, uh, no, not the 20th? You want to do, you're perfectly right, we can do the 6th the next week and then the 27th, but it's up to you.
Can I get the 12th and the 27th?
All right, let's do the 12th, which is Monday. Um, and we'll do the 27th for the dates. Uh, and then can we, um, post for the poll tax, uh, for the 12th?
For the 12th?
Yep. And, um, we're going to plan on the 27th. Just note that probably later 27th, we're gonna have to start planning because it will be budget season coming up.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You need to have some dates, notice, uh...
Oh, for poll tax here. All right, schedule for the 20th meeting on the 27th then. Hopefully it won't be very long.
I can meet the 14th, the meeting, between then and the end of September.
I can as well.
I'm good.
You go for the 14th? You want to go for the 14th? Great, we'll do it on the 14th. That way we can, we can get it done. Well, just if you post tomorrow, we'll, we'll make the 14th day deadline. Great. Um, my guess is that the lucky day, we'll attend the public hearing. Uh, current meeting minutes. So we have minutes for Tuesday, August 9th. Let's take a moment to look at those. I have one thing on page three. Third full paragraph down. Can you get a copy?
Uh, page three?
Yep. So, um, the sentence, uh, the second sentence in that paragraph reads, "Michael also suggested that vermin's come before the planning board prior to events." That's not right. It's, um, suggested they come before the planning board to discuss their communication about events. And, you know, the planning board needs to have that discussion, that's, we're not required to make any communication of different kinds. Other than that, I'm good. Do you guys have any suggested changes or additions to the list? All right, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. So last item we have, uh, revenue and expenses. Uh, you want to take, take enter and those. Um, these are through the end of August. Uh, I think the only exception being the, um, recycling numbers are through July. Any questions in terms of comments about the regulations and the 20th? Uh, any other items anyone has for the board?
Um, I spoke with Derek about the stairs and...
Derek, great.
And he recommends that we actually need to redo the stairs completely, otherwise we're going to have to be repairing them again, which is why he decided not to take the job. Um, I think it would be prudent if we're looking at spending a couple thousand dollars to get, uh...
So, should we go out and get a quote to redo the steps then?
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
We've got 8,200 in the building maintenance, so that should be, if we can use that, to pay for the stairs, correct?
Uh, presumably so. I'm sure, well, depending, obviously, if it's $50,000, that might be something that, you know, to go to the board of directors, but if it's something on that line, my guess is we, you know, we can probably find a way to squeeze it in here since the budget's financially, we're here right now. Uh, okay, so we'll, uh, we'll have Sue get quotes for the...
And he, and Derek said he's happy to turn up and, you know, give us a quote for it and, but he's gonna, you know, so we have to grade the hill and like the water, you can see where the water just comes down and falls on the stairs, and he said it's gonna, it's gonna be in the same spot.
Okay. All right, well, let's look to get more quotes and, and get to Sue. Uh, other matters?
I'm just curious, so all the documents we got out of the draft for the audit?
The audit itself?
Yeah. Is there a point was proposed, like, if you got, even though it's the draft articles, there's suggestions, it's, it's, it's...
Yep.
When do we, is what's done?
Uh, so, um, we can do that at any, at any other meeting, we can talk about, um, the results of the audit, and we put it on the agenda for next meeting or, or next ever. That's part of it, but, okay. We can do that. Uh, all right. No? Um, I don't think I have anything here. Great. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
That's my note. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you very much.